Please rise for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I get a mover to reconvene? Mrs. Albanese, Mr. Pavlak, and if you'd like to take roll call again, Mr. Moffett. We seem to have some changes.
Mrs. Albanese.
Here.
Mr. Bubba. Mr. Tuffey.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here. Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Sheer.
Here.
Okay. Dr. Toback.
Good evening, everyone. First, congratulations to the class of 2021. This is the final board of education meeting for our high school graduations, and I would like to take some time to congratulate all of our seniors for their resiliency and also their positive attitudes. The school year was an awful year to be a senior, but things have improved. These are better days, and we're very fortunate that we've been able to move ahead with our traditional end of year events, including proms that were held this week for both Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley. I was also very happy to attend both the Wayne Valley Community Scholarship Program and the Wayne Hills Senior Scholarship Awards ceremonies this week. I also like to mention that we've been able to make changes to our graduation ceremonies due to changes in indoor and outdoor gathering requirements. Originally, we started with a morning event at 9:30 with a backup time in the evening due to the fact that we would not be able to move our event indoors if the weather did not cooperate. Now we're returning to our regular graduation, 6:00 p.m. on June 22nd at both high schools with indoor graduations planned the same time in the event of bad weather. In addition to all the community recognition for our graduating class, the Wayne Township Public Schools will be publishing our end of year newsletter, which highlights the accomplishments of our 654 graduating seniors. In addition to a number of personal stories about the students and teachers, this year, we're also including a student voice section where one student from each high school will be sharing their thoughts about this past year and the class of 2021 as they at the respective schools. We look forward to sharing this important publication in the coming weeks. Both of our student representatives are moving on to college, and they're not in attendance at this evening's board meeting. At this point, I'd like to fill everyone in and talk a little bit about our spring athletic teams, which would normally be their responsibility. So, starting with Wayne Hills. Wayne Hills High School had a tremendous spring season. The baseball program finished an impressive 18 and four, bringing home both the Passaic County Championship and a decisive win against PCTI and a league championship as well. This is the first county title for Wayne Hills since 2009. The golf program and baseball. Golf program had something of a rebuilding year, but provided strong competition and certainly saw a great deal of growth throughout the season. Our boys lacrosse program progressed through the Passaic County Tournament, achieving entrance into the finals with an exciting game against Wayne Valley. Our girls lacrosse team, which has been moved up into a stronger division this year, had another strong year with postseason and first year athletes playing significant roles, leading to their bringing home yet another Passaic County Championship for the girls lacrosse program. The softball team finished out a challenging season with some decisive plays at the mound and found some great fielding. The boys tennis team successfully ended a strong 10 and 2 season with achieving 16 straight county championships. Like to share a special thanks to our veteran tennis coach, Mr. Bruce Keough, who is retiring this year. He's also served us as a distinguished Wayne Hills guidance counselor and longstanding and accomplished bowling and girls tennis coach. After a strong 13 and 8 record this season, the boys volleyball team successfully progressed through Passaic County's quarterfinal and semifinals, making it to the finals with a very close three game contest lost to West Milford. When he was also hosted the New Jersey State Sectional Championship for Boys and Girls Track and Field this past weekend with all North One, Group Two, and Three schools in participation. Six of our track and field athletes placed in their respective events. Wayne Hills recognized the valedictorian and varsity soccer player Manute Singh as the 2021 NJSEA Scholar Athlete recipient. Manute has earned a weighted GPA of 4.62 and will continue his academic career and rent Salier Polytechnic Institute. When he was also recognized as Passaic County Female and Male Student Athlete of the Year, Samantha Graff is a first team all county athlete in both basketball and lacrosse. She'll be continuing her career in academics and athletics at Quetzin University. And Dan Daly, who was recognized for first team all county in football and lacrosse, will be playing lacrosse at the United States Naval Academy. For Wayne Valley Spring Sports, it was another great season. It's great to be back playing sports after missing the 2020 spring season because of the pandemic. Baseball finished their season at 15 and 7. They're big North Conference co-independence division champs. Boys Golf finished their season at 12 and 3 and won the Big North Conference Independence Division. Girls Golf continued to grow and improve, finishing their season with the 2021 Passaic County Champ Championship. Boys Lacrosse finished their season at 12 and 5, won the first round game at the NJSI playoffs. Girls Lacrosse was in the fight every game and had three players earn first team all county. Softball continues to improve every season and has five all county award winners with a very young team. Boys Tennis continued to improve as the season progressed and first doubles qualified for the NJSI Doubles Tournament. And this weekend, Boys Volleyball was another great team that started slow but finished strong. Boys Track had a number of athletes qualifying for multiple events at the NJSI Group Three Championship. Girls Track and Field Team finished their third season in this, I'm sorry, the finished third in this division and still have several athletes competing in the group championship. The NJSI Scholar Athlete at Wayne Valley High School is Kyle Corso. Kyle has a 4.32 GPA and will continue his academic and baseball career at Columbia University. Passaic County Coaches Association Female Student Athlete for Wayne Valley is Tammy McNutt. Tammy was first team all county in both field hockey and winter track and will be attending Syracuse University this fall. Also like to report quickly on the Unified Sports Program. Unified Sports and Clubs Program at Wayne Township has expanded nearly district wide. We're excited to share during the spring season, a unified track and field team was established at Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills. Students were able to attend multiple practices and compete in two to three track meets and came together in person. All events were very successful. This summer, there will be an extension of our current partnership with Special Olympics of New Jersey during our extended school year program in conjunction with the Wayne Education Foundation. For students in grades four to 12 and young adult students who are eligible to participate in a variety of activities during the week of July 19th to 23rd, these activities include fitness, sports, team building, and recreational activities. The Wayne Educational Foundation will soon share information with the community about an opportunity for students to volunteer and be part of this partnership, provides an opportunity for students to emerge as leaders in the community and make friends with students that have a variety of interests and abilities. It encourages students to understand differences and similarities. Training will be provided to all student volunteers before the program begins. Also excited to share that the Special Olympics of New Jersey will be funding esports teams at Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills for the 2021, 2022 school year. Look forward to expanding and providing new opportunities for Wayne students through this partnership. Also happy to report that I was able to attend the annual auto show, which was held at Wayne Hills this year. Congratulations to Mr. Hopper and Mr. Bergen and all of the automotive students for a great show. And thank you to all the sponsors that added to the program, including the Wayne Police Department, which had many vehicles on display and as well as some of their equipment. Okay, so now on to the agenda. This Board of Education meeting is packed with important agenda items, presentations, and reports, including a report on our district goals for this year, as well as a preview of some possible goals for the upcoming school year. First, our Safe Return to School Plan. We'll be having a presentation this evening about the New Jersey Department of Education's Safe Return to School Plan. This is a mandated report and based on emails I've already received, the title of the presentation creates some confusion here in Wayne and probably in most communities. This presentation is not the same as the return to school plans that were provided to the community in the past, and this is really a starting point for next year's planning. At this point, the New Jersey Department of Education has yet to release any planning guidance for next school year. Another important point, the plan being shared tonight must be written to reflect current state and federal guidance, which has not changed, but will likely change multiple times before September. What we are doing tonight is reviewing a requirement that will allow the district to access significant federal funding under the American Rescue Plan. In our case, Wayne is eligible for a total of approximately $4.2 million, of which $2.8 million is available immediately, with another $1.4 million available at some point in the future. Funding can be used for a variety of purposes, including educational programs to address learning loss, technology, mental health needs, and facility needs, which have the effect of protecting students and staff. Note that the plan is being shared tonight, but there is no vote scheduled, and we'll be entering a period where we'll be seeking public comment and feedback. We'll be seeking public comment through a survey that will be distributed tomorrow. We suggest residents provide feedback looking forward to next year and share what you'd like to see for your children. Any employee of the district is also encouraged to participate in the survey and provide feedback. Mrs. Reichman will be providing a presentation in a few moments, and she'll be providing even more details. Regarding to the 2020, 2021 district goals, our system of district goals has been very effective, and it led to a number of important advancements in our schools over the years, including kindergarten rap and then full day kindergarten, our No Place for Hate program, the development of the Wayne Township Learning Center, which is our hub for professional development, the enhancement of numerous academic programs, and expansion of an in-district career and technical education program. At this point, I'd like to start to discuss our district goals, and for this year, due to pandemic, we only had two district goals. But I'd like to turn the meeting over to Tamika Reese, the consultant, who's here to discuss our equity diversion, I'm sorry, equity, diversity, and inclusion goal. Tamika.
Welcome, Tamika. You're on mute, dear.
There we go. Good evening. Good evening, President Kazan, members of the board, Dr. Toback, Assistant Superintendent Reichman, members of the community, and staff. I have to tell you, I am so privileged and honored to be here tonight to share all of the wonderful work that's been done by staff this year. Okay, so I'm here to present the final summary of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Goal outcomes. Am I moving it? Thank you. Background. In June 2020, the board established a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Goal. The board obtained the services of an external consultant to conduct the review. The consultant met with a core team to set the foundation for the work. From this meeting, committees were established to focus on seven specific areas to evaluate through an equity lens. The work was collaborative in nature, and the consultant worked with over 100 staff and stakeholders in completing this audit. Just to brief review, the district goal action items, develop a district mission statement, review curriculum and instruction, specifically English Language Arts and History, review human resources, policies, procedures, and hiring practices, develop No Place for Hate 2, assess nicknames, mascots, slogans, and school symbols, review student achievement outcomes, schedules, and related data, review social emotional learning programs and professional development. The mission statement, although this was approved in December, it was part of the goal, and I just wanted to share it again now. The Wayne Township Public School District is strengthened by the collective efforts of its community to raise informed, inquisitive, and compassionate members of society. We are committed to delivering a culturally responsive, critically engaging curriculum for students of all backgrounds. We provide instruction that is academically rigorous and affirms the humanity and dignity of all learners. We are dedicated to a constant evaluation of our current systems and policies and enact necessary changes to ensure equity and opportunity for all. Under the guiding principle that education is a human right, we provide students with equitable access to education that empowers them to positively engage in our democratic society and contribute to the global community. Curriculum and Instruction. Curriculum and Instruction Committees were created at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Training was provided on identifying seven types of bias found in instructional materials, invisibility, stereotyping, imbalance, and selectivity, unreality, fragmentation, and isolation, linguistic bias, and cosmetic bias. Committees reviewed books, texts, and novels used in English Language Arts and Social Studies for various types of bias. The findings for Elementary ELA and Social Studies. Most texts were appropriate, bias free, and there is evidence of diversity in cultural backgrounds. However, units need to be reviewed as a whole. Many family structures are represented, with the exception of the LGBTQ, and it would also be good to have single dads with children. To increase diversity of texts, Middle Eastern, Asian, and Indian authors need to be included. Additional texts dealing with mental health issues should be included. Middle School ELA Findings. 110 novels were reviewed for bias in addition to diversity of author. Invisibility, unreality, imbalance, and selectivity, fragmentation, and isolation were found in many of the texts. Novels were identified with suggested pairings to provide a different vantage point. Middle School History Findings. Novels were reviewed for bias. Out of 24 novels, invisibility, stereotyping, unreality, or imbalance, and selectivity were found in 22 of the resources. Some materials were selected to be removed. However, in most cases, supplemental resources should be added to provide perspective and balance. High School ELA Findings. Reviews were conducted only on novels and plays due to the time constraints. Teachers reviewed a list of all available novels and plays that had been approved as resources in the curriculum. Teachers worked in teams to select the most frequently taught novels and plays for closer examination through the anti-bias lens. They conducted the bias audit and make recommendations for future steps of action. There is an overall need to bring in Native American, Latinx, Asian American, and Arab American authors to diversify American literature. British literature as sequenced and defined is prohibitive to this process. The highest form of bias is invisibility and imbalance, suggesting that other texts can be brought in to ensure a more representative picture of themes and issues. Some textbooks may be outdated or obsolete, and suggestions to review new anthologies were made. Curriculum and Instruction, High School History. Five Core Classes, 11 Electives, and four Advanced Placement Electives. Were reviewed. The curriculum, whoops, my, I'm sorry, my, did I come up on another screen now? I'm sorry. Hold on one second, I'm having a technical issue. Hold up. There we go. I'm sorry, can you still see me? Give me one second, please. My computer just switched over.
Tamika, we can still hear you.
Oh, you can? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I.
You just go down a little bit and you're there.
Okay, there we go. All right, we'll just do it this way. Can you see me on just one place?
We can see you now.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm gonna do this. Hold on one second. Hold on one second. I apologize, really, it is like having a freeze here. Okay. Here we go, I apologize. Can you see me here?
We can see you fine.
Okay, I apologize. It just, something is going on. Okay, here we go. Five Core Classes, 11 Electives, and four Advanced Placement Electives were reviewed. The curriculum and seven of the courses should be updated using an equity lens to ensure a balanced perspective. Okay. Can you see me again now? I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you. Curriculum, High School Findings. Overall, there is a very Eurocentric worldview in the history text. Some suggested modifications from the committee include additional resources should be added to provide material on other perspectives, especially the voices of the marginalized groups impacted by imperialism and colonialism. The Contemporary Issues Unit in World History should be expanded to provide more information about current social and cultural issues impacting the world today. Teaching about race as a social construct should be included in world history in order to provide a foundation into the historical underpinnings of systemic and institutional racism. The African Empire Unit in World History should be expanded so students have an understanding of the rich culture in Africa before moving on to imperialism in order to address conflicting ideas about equality and freedom. Information on ways to prepare active citizens who provoke diversity and cultural understanding, advocacy, and allyship should be included in Introduction to Government. Additional information on Asia post-World War II should be included in world history. Intersectionality should be included in the psychology course. Middle Eastern Studies should be expanded to include issues such as race, racism, sexuality, et cetera. Systems of social inequality and unequal distribution of wealth and power should be included in sociology. In world geography, adding information regarding the cultural aspects of a region and how those changes have occurred over time would be beneficial. Human Resources. Three committees were established to review multiple aspects of human resources, including review the current application and job postings, review the interview process and committee structures, revise standard operating procedures and interview questions, and expand sources of attracting diverse candidates, review current advertising, marketing, and branding. Human Resources and Hiring Practices Application. The online application for certificated staff and administrators has been updated to include the following equity question. Please provide an example of how you make your students feel a sense of inclusion, belonging, and equity on a daily basis. The interview process has been updated to ensure a more inclusive and consistent process across schools. Standard operating procedures have been developed for administrators and teaching staff members. Human Resources and Hiring Marketing. The district's mission statement has been added to the district website. Updated marketing materials have been created and distributed to all job fairs and campus recruiting events to highlight commitment to an inclusive work environment. No Place for Hate 2. Scaffolded Equity and Social Justice Activities will be implemented at all grade levels in all schools in the district. All elementary school students will engage in an activity related to identity. All middle school students will engage in an activity related to inclusion and belonging. All high school students will engage in an activity related to advocacy and allyship. Mascots. In December 2020, the district invited community stakeholders to engage in a thought exchange to share their thoughts on the following question. What are the most important priorities we should consider as we work towards our goals of having a more diverse, inclusive, and culturally competent school system? The top 10 thoughts were, teach kids respect, self-discipline, and take responsibility for their actions. Everyone needs to feel safe in the school environment. Respect each other's differences and have empathy. It's important to understand that as individuals, we all contribute to the society that we want to have. Acceptance of all students of different races, sexual orientation, gender, et cetera. People come in all colors and forms. We are all humans created equally. No one is above another. Showing respect toward everyone. Acceptance of everyone's individuality. Teach history the way it happened, not the way we like to think it occurred, as well as including multiple viewpoints on events, so we don't repeat the past and understand each other in the present. Make sure our children feel understood and valued. Include people with special needs. Teach our students to respect each other. Everyone should be proud of their culture, no matter what religion or race. Key things in this exchange were respect, understanding, everyone, acceptance, include, safe. In the recent mascot thought exchange, participants were asked to share their thoughts on keeping or replacing the Wayne Valley mascot. There were 2,742 participants, there were 2,908 thoughts, and 83,706 ratings. 65% of the responses were from Wayne Valley High School students and alumni. The top thoughts on keeping the mascot were, it's part of Wayne's history, it's tradition, and honoring the Native Americans. The top thoughts on replacing the mascot were, it's culturally insensitive, it's a stereotype, and it's racist. At this point, there does not appear to be a need to change the mascot based on the population sampled in this thought exchange. However, there were thoughts that expressed a different point of view and should not be overlooked. Since tradition and honoring the Native American were the resounding reasons not to change the mascot at this time, it may be possible to find an alternative way to honor them and keep the spirit of the tradition alive. As the district embraces its Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative through its mission statement, hiring practices, marketing, and curriculum revisions, it may be worth further conversations with more members of the community to ensure the values espoused are truly aligned. Programming Considerations. Educate Wayne Valley students at dance about appropriate, respectful, and socially conscious ways to honor Native Americans while supporting athletic teams. Data Analysis. After reviewing much of the data sources, it was apparent that the pandemic significantly impacted the value of the trend analysis, since there were no test scores for the past two years. As such, a trend had to be looked at starting five years ago with recent data two years ago. Therefore, data analysis will begin using September 21st as a foundation, using the Smart Start testing outcomes in the fall of 2021. Additionally, when reviewing AP and GNT, it was not clear if the same criteria for inclusion as the classes was consistent across schools and grades. This will be examined further in order to interpret the data accurately. Social Emotional Learning. This area has been divided into three subcommittees, SEL Vision Statement, SEL Programs, and School Culture and Professional Development. Social and Emotional Learning is an integral part of education and human development. SEL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relations, and make responsible and caring decisions. The SEL Mission Vision Statement. The Wayne Township Public School District holds social and emotional learning central to holistic student growth, focusing upon whole child development in a culturally responsive manner. We recognize and affirm the humanity and dignity of all learners and view students as active citizens of the world around them. We believe that in order to grow academically, students must engage with diverse communities and actively contribute to society in a way that recognizes its inherent multiple perspectives. To this end, we expect our students to become committed advocates and engaged members of our community and global society. We commit to providing equitable opportunities and experiences for our students and staff with a justice-informed approach that explicitly addresses racism and implicit bias and focuses upon relationship and focuses upon relationship-centered learning environments. We will engage in this work through informed, culturally responsive staff development and student engagement that embraces partnerships with families and with our broader learning community. We will continually reflect upon our work to ensure that it's facilitated in a manner that validates the dignity and uniqueness of all members of our school communities. Social Emotional Learning Programs. Surveys were distributed to guidance counselors in each school to ascertain the degree of development and implementation of SEL programs throughout the district. Overall, the findings were as follows. There is no formal curriculum that is implemented with consistency throughout grade levels or buildings. There's not dedicated time in the schedule for SEL practices to occur. SEL competencies and skills are not integrated into academic frameworks, and ongoing opportunities for professional development related to SEL are not robust. School Climate and Professional Development. The intent was to conduct school climate surveys to all stakeholders this year. Due to the pandemic, this action did not take place, and the goal is to conduct this activity in the fall of 2021 and the spring of 2022 to establish baselines. Spotlight on SEL was a section included in the superintendent's newsletter to highlight SEL activities that were happening throughout the district. Professional Development Topics for the summer and fall were discussed for implementation in the fall and for all staff. The professional development will be tiered in order to provide learning opportunities best suited to the individual staff member and will include topics such as: Social Identity, Implicit Bias and Stereotype Threat, Microaggressions, Cultural Competency, Culturally Competent Pedagogy, Courageous Conversations, The Link Between Social Emotional Learning and Academic Achievement. Next Steps. Summer. The consultant will meet with all subcommittees to outline action steps with timelines for initiatives. This will be incorporated into a collaborative executive summary that will be presented to the board and community in the fall. Curriculum Revisions will begin as well as identifying additional resources to eliminate biases and add perspectives to themes and topics. SEL Standards will be incorporated into the curriculum. Social Justice Standards will be incorporated into the curriculum. Tiered Professional Development for Administrators will be initiated. New High School History Texts will be reviewed and identified for future purchase. Professional Development will be provided to staff on effectively teaching elements of the enhanced curriculum. Human Resources will use applicant tracking features to identify results of the new marketing and branding techniques, as well as to ascertain if additional adjustments need to be made in any steps of the recruiting and hiring process to attract and hire diverse applicants. And before we go to the next part, if I could just take one moment. As I said, I had the privilege and the honor to work with over 100 amazing staff members in the district. And although I'm not going to acknowledge all of them, I would just like to briefly acknowledge and thank them for all of the work they did. To Scott Burkholdr, Matt McNanely, Dawn Arbak, Kathy Gaynor, Jose Silas, Heather Weinstein, Christine Cordiara, Kelly Benizia Crilly, Roger Ogallin, Kristy Stoffey, Christine Bentemiglia, Jen Lowenewski, Jen Montana, Sarah Cheliak, Paula Clark, and Ken Pauseski. And I just wanted to just take that moment and thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. It's been a privilege, a pleasure, and an honor.
Ms. Reese, thank you for that report. Clearly, we've left no stone unturned in this district with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And thank goodness, this is a two-year goal because it's quite a heavy lift, and it did take a village to accomplish it under your guidance. And I want to thank you very much for your efforts and to everyone else involved. Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to add, Dr. Toback?
I just also, I'd like to echo some of the thoughts that have been expressed. We're very proud of the progress that we've made in our school community as we opened up our district to review under a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's vital, important work. So I did want to thank Tamika and the 100 others or so that participated from across the district in this really significant project.
Thank you for having me.
So, did any of the board members have any questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any hands. Just for the public to be aware, these are thoughts and recommendations that'll be handled through our normal process of committee work. If something needs board approval, it'll eventually make its way to an agenda. And that'll happen over time and with recommendations from our internal staff, our superintendent specifically. And thank you again, Ms. Reese. Much appreciated. It's not an easy thing, self-reflection, but I think it's always a good thing and a positive thing.
I'd just like to say you've got a great staff there.
Yes, we do.
A pleasure to work with, and it's been truly wonderful working with them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So now.
Dr. Toback?
Okay.
Dr. Toback.
So Mrs. Reichman actually has, remember, we mentioned there were two goals for the district this year. So Tamika presented one of the goals, Mrs. Reichman will present the other goal.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, Mrs. Reichman.
Good evening, everyone. Just waiting for Dr. Burchard to bring up the slide. Goal number two was our Return to School Plan. Dr. Toback and I have been reporting out on this goal throughout the year. So at this point, I just wanted to give a quick summary of what we have done. The CDC, the NJDOA, and the Department of Health and guidance released by the governor was complied with, and the Wayne Return to School Plan was updated and released to the community as new guidance and requirements became available. Schools were open as much as possible. We were very fortunate to be able to return our students to school on September 8. And throughout the year, we were able to keep our schools open quite a bit. A hybrid distance learning plan was put in place to allow for comprehensive and inclusive instruction to meet the needs of our at-home and in-person pre-K through 12 students. And this was due to our tremendous efforts from the technology department to deploy devices at the start of the pandemic throughout the summer and make sure that we had technology training available throughout the school year. And, you know, a great congratulations and show of appreciation to all of our staff who embraced and learned all this new technology. Academic Support and Enrichment Programs were put in place to meet the varied needs of our students and address unfinished learning. Behavioral impacts throughout the pandemic were considered, and counseling services and programs were planned to help students and staff prepare for in-person learning. The Wayne Public School Safe Return to School Safe Reopening Plan was developed and will be available for public comment. That presentation will be shared next. And this plan is based on the current guidance and will be updated prior to September as we have new guidance released. That concludes our second goal report.
Thank you, Mrs. Reichman. Okay, back to you, Dr. Toback.
Okay.
A lot of presentations this evening.
There are a lot of presentations. So at this point, what we'd like to do is go to the Safe Return to School Plan that we originally talked about in my administrative report. At this point, we're going to open it up. We're going to do the presentation. We'll have a time period for public comment now. And Mrs. Reichman will also explain how comments and thoughts will be collected from the public in the coming weeks. So this is not a final plan. The board is not voting tonight. But this is basically a presentation as I described in my report. Mrs. Reichman?
Thank you. Dr. For sure, we can advance to the next slide. As Dr. Toback indicated when he shared his report earlier this evening, on May 24, the New Jersey Department of Education released guidance for the federal funding included in the schools, for schools, in the American Rescue Plan. And this is for elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief. This was new guidance. We are aware that parents have lots of concerns about what the opening of school will look like in September. We do not have all that information yet because our planning will be determined based on the guidance that we're given, any parameters that are released and put in place. We are fully aware that there are lots of concerns about social distancing and masking. We need to make sure that any plans that we have are consistent with the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Health requirements at the time. So it's likely that this plan will be revised and updated over the summer as new information is released. And as we did last summer, as we approached the beginning of the new school year, Dr. Toback and I will share any information as we have, and we will continue to develop our plans. We can go to the next slide. This slide includes the timeline for the grant completion and submission. We are required to offer public comment for a period before our June 24 submission of this plan. Tomorrow, this presentation will be shared on our website. The actual template, which was devised by us, constructed by the New Jersey Department of Education, will be shared on the website. And I will also include a link to a Google form which will give anyone from the public an opportunity to share input and feedback. We can go to the next slide. Each of these slides details exactly what's scripted on the template. So you'll see tomorrow that it mirrors exactly what's on the template. We just wanted to give you a preview tonight. As I said earlier, right now, anything that's included is based on the information that we have. So at the present time, you know, our elementary students have returned. They participate full day with no cohorts. The physical distancing requirements are currently at three feet. Just this week, we released some new information about guidance for wearing masks. And this was in conjunction with information that was shared by the governor just two days ago. We can go to the next slide. As far as we are aware, at this time, masks will still be required for the onset of 21, 22 school year. But again, new information comes out frequently. And as we have new information, this information will be communicated and shared with the public. And as I just stated, physical distancing is currently at three feet. We can go to the next slide. This part of the template details our commitment to maintaining cleaning and hand-satantizing protocols. Next slide. We'll continue with the process for contact tracing and screening as required by the New Jersey Department of Health and the NJDOA. Again, we anticipate that it's likely this will change, and as we have new information, we will release it. Efforts will be maintained to work with the township to secure vaccination appointments for staff. We have a number of summer programs and academic programs that are running at all levels, offering academic recovery and enrichment opportunities for our students. Tiered Intervention will be a focus of our instructional model when we return to school next fall. And once again, I'm just going to reiterate that throughout the pandemic, we made public presentations to communicate our plans with all stakeholders. We took input from committees, public comment, and we released a number of thought exchanges to gather up your ideas and thoughts. Tomorrow, we will share out a link so that you can communicate any input you have based on what is shared in this presentation tonight, and we'll continue to update you throughout the summer. And at this time, I really just wanted to say thank you to all of our nurses, our counselors, our CST team members, teachers, related service providers, support staff, and principals. They were on the front lines every day, working extra hard this year to keep our students safe and feeling secure in our schools. So a huge thank you to all, and thank you. We look forward to your comments and your input. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Reichman. Any questions or comments from the board? None? Okay. Dr. Toback, back to you.
Okay, so Dr. Burchard, if you could pull up the 2021, 22 district goals. And while he's doing that, what I'd like to do is just wrap up something, the HIV report. There were five incidents investigated since my last report. None of those cases were deemed to be cases of HIV. Okay? Okay, next page, please. As I mentioned before, the fact that we've had these district goals over the past few years has been something that has been, it's been a very powerful tool. They're all one, maybe two-year goals, in some cases, three-year goals. But for the most part, they've led to some really significant improvements in this school district. This year, we're proposing just three goals. Although the first goal really probably could be divided into two goals because it really pertains to an academic recovery, but it also pertains to issues of mental health, right? All sorts of issues that perhaps we'll be facing in the school district once the school year starts again. So some of it is contained in the information we talked about with our recovery plan and our plan for next year. But this particular goal is something that is already informed by a number of counselors. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the mental health piece. Within the plan and within the financial side of the goal, right? There's a significant amount of money set aside for services to be delivered directly to students. Okay? So after hearing from counselors across the district, so we had, I had three different meetings with counselors from the high school, middle school, and elementary school level. All the counselors reported an uptick in different types of situations. In some cases, it's because students have not been to school. So there's new things that have happened that the students have not received counseling or services for. In other cases, there are situations that were unknown that now the counselors are aware of. In other cases, there's issues of school avoidance. One particular issue is that students that are transitional and in that they are making their way from, for example, from eighth grade to ninth grade, or they're making their way from fifth grade to sixth grade. Those particular students, in many cases, have never set foot in their school before, their new school. So a new sixth grader who's never been in school. In some cases, the students are coming in, they're returning to school, then going right back out because they're experiencing anxiety, they're concerned. There's lots of different issues their counselors are reporting. Many of our high school counselors are reporting really some very acute cases, some serious issues that they're seeing with the high school students. And likewise, at the elementary level, there are a lot of things that have happened since many of our students have been in school. In many cases, those students have not been counseled, have not seen anybody, and need services. One of the parts of this particular goal, and something that was agreed upon by all the different counseling groups, what would be very helpful, is there are many situations where students need services. But for whatever reason, the services are not available to them. In other words, for whatever reason, sometimes parents don't have insurance, they don't have the funding so students can go and receive these services for mental health issues. One of the proposal, proposal for this goal is to actually hire an agency to handle the most serious cases. So in other words, we have a certain number of issues that we see. In many cases, the counselors are recognizing this is beyond what I can handle here. But they also recognize that under the circumstances, the students will not receive services. So that's part of what's included here. But what you see here is a general statement. If you go to the next slide, Dr. Burchard, you can see some action steps that are important for the district. One of the things that is listed as part of our plan, but also is something that is recommended for districts across the country, is to initiate a screening process. You started that process, but screening students to make determinations about where they stand academically as well as mental health issues, right? So you see some actions that could be taken there, including the adverse child experience training. So that would be an important thing. And then you can see down below that, tiered system of responses. Some of the words, moving forward with RTI, Response to Intervention, which is something that is in wide use across the country in schools to help students academically, and so to identify what types of needs are out there and how to fill those performance gaps. We also have summer programming that is. We also have summer programming that is set up and at this point planned for mid-July. And if you can scroll down a little bit, Dr. Bishard. So we've also developed a crisis and bereavement manual. So we had one that's now updated. The other thing that was mentioned previously in Tamika's report, and something that keeps coming up, is further analysis of our counseling program to be completed by our guidance counselors. And that's something that we'd like to do in the summer of 2021, but also throughout next year. So we have a formal guidance curriculum that the counselors will be responsible to deliver. So those are just some of the action steps that we have. There's probably some more we'll be able to add before next week. So this is not an action item for the board. It's not up for a vote. Let's just give you an introduction to these goals. I've sent a copy before, just in general. Now this is fleshed out a little further. If you can go to the next goal. So if you keep scrolling down a little bit, Dr. Bishard. So this is basically continuing with our diversity, equity, and inclusion goal for next year. So as you heard from Tamika Reese, there's a lot of findings, there's a lot of information to digest, there's a lot of things that we could possibly pursue, probably more than what we could even do in year two of this goal. So at some point, we have to prioritize, and we're going to work with her to make some determinations about what the best action steps we will have for next year. Finally, if we go to the last goal, so there's no action steps yet purposely because we need to hear back from Tamika Reese, our consultant. The other, the other goal has to do with something probably many residents and Wayne have read about already, which is, it appears there's going to be a lot of construction going on in the community. It appears there'll be quite a, quite a bit going on along Hamburg Turnpike, and that will lead to, by the township's projection, an additional 1,000 students at some point, not all at once, but at some point, probably over the next 10 years. We have our own demographic study in process that is not yet complete. We are working with the demographer for a final report. We will be sharing that with the board. The whole idea here is if the, if the projection is accurate, if it is an additional 1,000 students, where they would go and for school, and what kind of facilities we would have available, those are all very important topics, and it's important to talk about those things now because there's a progression. All these things take time. Construction takes time, renovation work takes time. You can see the example of the Preakness School. The Preakness School is no doubt going to have to be, based on its location, an important part of whatever solution we come up with. And if you'll, you'll notice there's been a progression. It started many years ago to preserve the school. We started using it a little bit more. So the library was in operation, but on the other side of the school that was pretty much not utilized, we made that into the learning center, right? Time went by. We leased it out to the Northern Region Ed Services Commission on the second floor. Renovations were made, work was done, that part is done. Then we move along to the Early Childhood Center in preparation for full-day kindergarten. So that entire wing that is now the Early Childhood Center has been renovated and up to speed. So there's some more work to do, but the point is that that school is almost ready to go as a fully functional elementary school that would house over 400 students. So we have to keep working on that, and we have other things that we have to do. We also have a number of projects that, due to the pandemic, kind of went by the wayside. So one of them was the bleachers, right? We had a bleacher project that we were actively discussing as a board, where ultimately we know that we need to replace the bleachers at both of our high schools. So those bleachers are, you know, they're, they're at their end of their useful lifespan, and they need to be replaced. So that's a project. On top of that, there's roof projects, there's curbing projects, there's all sorts of projects across the district that, you know, they all require analysis as part of an overall look at our district. And so that's basically what this goal is about. So those, those three goals, we thought were three significant goals, they're important goals, and we will flesh them out before the next board meeting, but we're hoping to have the board review them, add suggestions, talk to us a little bit more about things that you might want to see. And at that point, hopefully, we'll bring something that works well for the school district and works well for everyone, so we can have that at the 24th Board of Ed meeting. So I think that concludes, I know it's a lot of reporting and presentations, but that concludes it for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Did anyone have any comment or question about the goal presentation? Okay. All righty. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we have a few tonight in, under Section M, Human Resources, under number one, approval of resignations, retirements. Number seven, Barbara Giuliano, add the word retirement under reason. On number three, which was approval to hire for emergent vacant positions, the language was revised, it reads, "Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of a superintendent, approves for the time period July 1, 2021 through September 1, 2021, superintendent to hire for emergent vacant positions needed for the opening of school upon consultation with the Board President and the Chair of the Personnel Committee." The next revision is number 10, approval of additional compensation. Number 13, under assignment, elementary phonics teacher, remove names A and B. Moving on to the emergent section of tonight's agenda, we have a change in, under S, emergent education. Number eight, approval of textbooks. We will be adding on line number one, add Wayne Valley High School. In the T, emergent human resource, we have two other changes. Item number three, approval of leave requests, revise number five, ID number 6108 to read dates of unpaid leave without benefits, April 20, May 19, May 21, May 24, May 25, June 7, June 10, and June 11, 2021. Under number five, approval of revised items, we're going to revise number two, ID number 8614 to read, revise end date of sick days from June 7, 2021 to June 10, 2021, FMLA/NJFLA, June 11, 2021 through September 3, 2021, and September 4, 2021 through October 1, 2021, vacation floater recess days. And finally, the last revision under X, emergent school resource legal, we'll be adding, number one, approval of settlement agreement. Recommended action reads as follows. "Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 21, excuse me, number 2716197875, OAL docket number EDS 033398-2021, agency reference number 2021-32609 dated June 10, 2021, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. At this point, we are going to move to our first public session, and I just want to remind everyone that this is a public work session, which means that the entire first portion of our agenda is not being voted on this evening. So therefore, those items are not discussable under the first public portion. You're free to bring them up. In the second public portion, which we are voting on the emergent items, so of course, if you have something to say about one of those, that would be allowable under the first public portion. So this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, second. Mrs. Putta.
Hi, Katie Clark, 34 Hillcrest Drive. I wanted to say I really appreciate the work and time and effort that went into the diversity, equity, and inclusion goal.
Katie, Katie, I'm sorry. That's not something we're voting on. That's what I just explained. So if you could kindly wait until the second public portion, we can discuss it there.
Got it.
James Freezwick, 1212, Summer Hill Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this about, is this about an agenda item that we're voting on this evening?
I believe it is. I have a comment regarding your policy regarding public participation in board meetings. I believe that's policy number 0167, which is on the agenda. It's an agenda item.
Well, actually, we're not voting on it. We're moving it to the next meeting. Tonight is just a discussion on that topic. Public work session items are not voted on at the meeting. They're moved to the next meeting.
So this is not a proper time to comment on this?
No, you can bring that up in the second public portion. We're not voting on it, but we will discuss it. You may want to wait.
Okay, I'll bring it up, I'll wait and bring it up at the second public portion. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mr. Duffy, Mr. Pavlak. Thank you. Okay. Committee minutes, I'm meeting. Who would like to go first? Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The Education Committee met tonight. They included myself, Eileen Albanese, along, that was Donna Reichman, Dennis Sur, and Don Arbach were also present. We reviewed the agenda from the previous meeting and approved that one. The topics discovered were kindergarten registration and staffing. We looked at residency issues, we went over the elementary, middle, school, and high school summer reading lists. We had a discussion about textbook approvals, even including AP program approvals. And we had a discussion about the educational portion as regarding the American Rescue Plan and the allocation possibly in the future, and had some discussions about that. And that concluded what happened at the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Mrs. Putta?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met this evening. Mr. Moffett and Ms. Leiting from the Business Office, Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Gazan, and myself were in attendance. We had a lot to review this evening. Financial reports, our transportation agreements, contracts for tech, technology and professional services, vended meals, a transfer of funds to reserves, the ARP and ESER grants. We also had grant updates for CARES, FEMA, and ESER funds. We had a business office update about future employment there. We had a 2021 budget update, review and appropriations, our enterprise programs, the unemployment account, which of course was affected by COVID. We also talked about an increase in tuition to Passaic County Vocational Technical School. The increase for next year will be $340,000. And we also discussed further items that will be coming up on the June 24 agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putta. Were there any other committees that met that need to report? Okay, not seeing any. Let's move on to the agenda. Can I get a mover?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move the entire agenda.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Mr. Pavlak? Okay. Discussion. Go ahead, Mrs. Albanese.
Two items I wanted to raise. The first was under the public work session, N number one, it's policy number 4125. I understand that this is standard language being put forward by Strauss Esme, and I don't want to imply that there's any thought process to go ahead with something like this. But it's a policy about the employment of support staff members. The language does read that there's the ability to go back to a contracting service at some point to hire substitutes for the district. I think for many of us who have been here, we've been down that road, we know it was at best not a successful program for us. So I would ask my fellow board members if we would like to have that particular part of the language stricken from that policy. That's first. The next is under public work session, N number two. This is changes to the public participation in, in meetings. I do understand during the pandemic.
Mrs. Albanese, can I just recommend that we do one at a time?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I think that would make it easier.
Sure.
Okay, so with 4125, does anyone have a copy of that policy that they could bring up for the board to see it on their computer? I'm sorry? Is there a way to do that so we can see the language and the board can discuss it? I think that's how we should handle it. That this is what we're doing. You want us to go to the next policy because we're going to need the same thing?
So why don't you do that?
Well, we'll need a copy of that as well. Sorry. It's, well, if we're going to discuss the policies, well, you know, we could wait. We're, we're not on a timeline. I know.
Do you want to pull those from the vote?
No.
Okay.
This is a public work session. This is where we discuss. That's the purpose of the meeting, and I think this is the proper time to address it and have the discussion. Spare with us. We want to bring the policy up so we can have a good discussion. You're a gentleman and a scholar, Mr. Giordano. Does anyone care to elaborate on the policy? Who was involved? What committee did that come out of? Didn't go through committee? Was that personnel, Mr. Giordano? I don't recall it coming from policy committee. I would, I'm on it. I don't remember discussing that one, not at all. Obviously, the second one, that I remember quite well. Says reviewed at the policy committee. It does say it, but I don't recall it. Well, that one I remember. Okay. Well, we'll get there. I think we might have not spent a lot of time on it because it was just like a Strauss Esme update or something and glossed over it. Ah, you got it? Can you screen share?
If we can, probably the better way of doing this, like I said, this is unexpected, is to maybe disroll the language.
Okay. Okay. Well, read the paragraph that Mrs. Albanese is concerned about so the board can hear it.
So the paragraph reads, "The Board may employ substitutes and/or contract for substitutes for absent support staff members in order to ensure continuity in a program. The Board will annually approve a list of substitutes and rate of pay, and/or the Board will approve a contract for a contracted service provider to provide substitute support staff." I think that captures the, the issue.
Okay. Is that what you'd like amended, Mrs. Albanese?
Yeah, I would like us to take out the language about the ability to hire an outside service.
Right. If we need to do that, it should be done separately.
That's right.
We like our current system and have no desire to change it. Would anyone else like to weigh in on that? Mr. Pavlak?
I, I agree. I was here for when we did outsource to a service, and it was, to say it was a disaster is putting it nicely.
Understatement. Mrs. Putta?
I concur with my colleagues. I do not want to use outside contractors for our support staff members. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have consensus to remove the language and re-submit or vote on it with the first reading tonight to move it forward as a first reading? So everyone is in agreement to change the language? Okay.
This is class N one.
I'm sorry?
So to be clear, we will come back at our next meeting, and we will have a revised version of the policy.
But we'll have it as a second reading?
As a second reading.
Yes, because we're not pulling it or tabling it.
Fun.
Thank you. I think you're pretty clear on what needs to be removed.
I am now.
Do we need to make a motion to amend?
I would.
Okay, Mrs. Albanese.
I would make it when we pass, I'll say as amended. And two, right now, and one, we can discuss, we'll say as amended. And then I think we can add the second, right? There's a second issue with-
Yeah, we'll get to that. But this one, you're just going to go ahead with as amended?
Right. When I do the resolution, I'll amend.
Got it. Okay.
As, as-
Very good. Carry on, Mrs. Albanese.
Do you want me to make a motion to amend the first?
No. He'll say as amended, there's consensus to amend the first reading.
Okay. The other policy I wanted to discuss was also under the PWS. And number two, the change to public participation. It's policy number 0167. I do understand why during the pandemic, we wanted to have some form of a time limit. We wanted to have a limitation as we're at this point intending to look at going back to full in-person public meetings. I would not like to see us make this change. I would like us to stay with the five-minute time limit. I don't want to put a time limit on the public portion because I do think at times when we do have a sensitive issue, it will wind up with people not being able to get to the podium within the timeframe. So I realize there may not be consensus on the board. I just wanted to voice my concern that that's not a policy change I would like to support. I think we need to be very sensitive to members of the public wanting to speak on a sensitive topic that at times I, I realize does take a while, but it, it's the job of the board member to hear what people have to say and allow people their opportunity to speak. So that's my view on that policy. I would like, I will not vote for that change. And again, I leave that up to my fellow board members, how they feel about that.
Been on mute. Mrs. Share?
Um, oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I am going to agree with Ms. Albanese and disagree with her. So I would like to not put a time lim- Oh, my God, the echoing's awful. I would like to not put a time limit on how long they can talk, meaning not the 45 minutes, but I would like to move it to the three minutes because five minutes is very long. I do want to hear what the public says, but when you have five minutes to speak, you tend to get very repetitive. And since I've been on the board in the past five, six years, I, we have been, there have been many hot topics, as there should be in education. But you, you also have to consider the fact that some of us don't want to sit there till one in the morning at a public meeting. And it's not because I don't want to hear the public or because I'm lazy or anything like that. I do have a family and I have a job. And for our administration especially, they work all day, then come and sit at a meeting that could go till one in the morning or so. And then they also have to get up the next morning and be ready, you know, to fit the day. And I just, I, I feel like if you, if you write a speech and you, in three minutes, three minutes is a long time in public speaking. And I feel like you could, you're more than able to get in whatever you want to convey in that three minutes. Plus, if you talk in the first section, you can always come back the second section to finish off what you have to say. You'll have another three minutes. So I would like to change the five minutes to three minutes. But I am agreeing with Ms. Albanese that we don't need to put the 45-minute timeframe on because in reality, this is our public. These are the people that we need to hear from. Thank you.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Burchard?
Thank you. Um, this particular policy was not done in a vacuum, as few policies are. We did consult with New Jersey School Boards Association and for guidance. And they told us that, and makes sense, that the main purpose for us being here as Board of Education members is to conduct the business of the school district. And I agree. The reason that we set the three-minute time limit was, as I agree with my colleagues, people can pretty much say what they have to say in three minutes. In order to block out the first period of time, 45 minutes seemed appropriate so that we could get to the business of the board. If you would like, we can open up the second session, keep the comments to three minutes, but we could leave that open, which would mean that the public would have an opportunity to voice their opinions without restriction except for the three minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Baba, I was muted again.
I disagree with school boards because part of doing the board's business is listening to stakeholders on agenda items. That's when you listen is in that first portion of the meeting because it's on agenda items only. So I don't, I, I don't agree that we should just be doing board business and, you know, cap them. We have been through many issues going back, let's see, we had, talking about substitutes, we had long meetings about when we, when we did privatize the substitutes. We had long meetings when it came time for kindergarten the first two times. Long meetings happen. They don't happen all the time. I, I think this is jumping way too fast, and it's very limiting to me. So I wouldn't support the 45 minutes at all. The three minutes, maybe, but definitely not the 45 minutes.
Anyone else? Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. I was on the Policy Committee, and I'm getting an echo. Hang on a second here. I was on the Policy Committee, and I was anxious to move this forward, to hear the opinions of all of my esteemed colleagues on this. That's why I like to see it on the agenda tonight. My personal opinion is during the pandemic, we were in a completely different dynamic. People did not have to expend as much time or energy to get on and talk to you. They could sit very comfortably at home. That was a different situation. If you are a citizen who gets out of the house, gets in the car, drives to town, to the town meetings, and sits in one of those unfortunately rather uncomfortable chairs, I see in that chambers area, and, you know, listens to people, that's a totally different story. We also see a lot of times when a person comes up and they very eloquently state their point, you rarely see six, seven, eight, nine people come up and say the exact same things over and over and over again. They realize the point has been across. They realize that they see us listening to them. And sometimes they'll come and add a point that's missed on it. They'll make an emphasis on it, but they won't go into an entire five-minute dialogue over something that they're very passionate about. So reducing it to three minutes, I'm okay with that. I don't really like the idea of putting a cap on in this case. If you're taking the time and an effort and you're a taxpayer of the town, or you're a parent, or you're a stakeholder in this town, or whatever combination you are, if you take the time and effort to come to us in our chambers and have something to say, you need to have the ability to say that comfortably and completely. So that's where I'm standing on that situation. In one of those chairs.
Mr. Pavlak?
Um, one, I, I don't support the 45-minute time limit. You know, I, we have, we have a mechanism in place now. If we have to, if we feel that there's a need to reduce time, that we can vote on it at each meeting to do. Definitely not the 45 minutes. The three minutes, I think is kind of short. But I do agree that people get two bites at the apple. But again, this whole policy, there's a mechanism in place that we can deal with it as, on a non-needed, as needed basis.
Anyone else? Okay, what I'm hearing is the majority, one, two, three, four, five, wish to remove the 45-minute time limit and stick with the three minute. Is the board okay with that? Does anyone object to that? Okay, so that's an amendment we will move forward with. Forget the 45-minute restriction, but change it to three minutes because we can always vote to do the 45 minutes. Dr. Toback?
Do you want me to read what would be removed from the policy? Or are you okay?
If you wish.
It's very quick.
Okay. No, for the record, absolutely.
Following language would be removed. The first public comment session shall be limited to 45 minutes in duration. Second public comment session shall be limited to 45 minutes and/or may not extend past 11 o'clock. So that is for policy 0167, public participation in board meetings.
That will be removed.
That will be removed.
Thank you. Okay. I was going to read everything I researched on the sunshine law and the Open Public Meetings Act, but I'm not going to waste anyone's time. But it was pretty interesting. And if you ever wish to read about it, it's not that lengthy. And it basically does say that the board is here to do business. We don't turn into pumpkins at 11 o'clock. We're accessible through email. Public portion, yes, there is a right, but we can limit it. And we don't have to respond. So I, I think there's a misunderstanding of the role of the board, too, sometimes. On a big hot-button issue, we should probably do a community forum. This way, there can be a Q and A, and the people who make the decisions and recommendations can be there to answer the questions because that's not really our job. We are here to do the business of the board, and we don't administer the schools. So while I agree, we do need to hear from the constituents, the stakeholders, the taxpayers, there, there is a limit to what we can do here. So to listen to repetitive, lengthy comments, and I disagree that they haven't been repetitive, at least this year, but, oh, it was an unusual and unique situation. And it will probably settle down when we go back to public meetings in person. So, okay, I think we have consensus here. And were there any other discussion items? Because the agenda is still the motion on the floor. We'll move that as amended as well, correct? Mr. Moffett?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Unless there's any other discussion or amendments.
Okay, while I'm waiting. Mrs. Share, did you have something?
I, I was just curious. I noticed that the, and I should have asked this beforehand. I'm sorry. I noticed that the, for the substitutes being approved, the daily rate, did we change that? Or is that consistent with what we've had? The daily rate, it says for 200.
Agenda item number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Two. Hold on. How this echoes. T emergent two? I could just be totally not remembering correctly, and, and that's what it's been.
Could you please read what's, what's your question?
I'm sorry?
Please just read quickly what you're questioning.
To what?
You know, could you just tell me?
Oh, it's just the salary, the daily rate for the, it says 200.
That's correct. So the board agreed to retain the $200 rate for the duration of this academic year.
Okay.
The 24th, there's a Personnel Committee meeting. At that meeting, the substitute rates for the upcoming year will be discussed.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was a different number. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the agenda? Okay. We'll call Mr. Moffett.
Let me just go over the, the resolution before us tonight is the entire agenda. That was motion by Mr. Duffy, seconded by Mr. Pavlak. There was discussion, and there are two amendments moving forward with consensus of the board for N number one and, and number two, as amended and as discussed. And one will be, the amendment will remove language related to outside contractors. And number two amendment will be removing language for 45 minutes and keeping language for the three-minute limitation with both consensus. Is that agreeable? Okay. As amended, I'll take roll.
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese? Mr. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, and on HR 10, abstain, and abstain on anything with PCTI.
Clearly noted. Mrs. Kazan?
Forgive me, but did we change the professional contract resolution for special ed?
It currently reads, one, we can make an amendment, two-
Did you read that in?
Well, the amendment hasn't been really confirmed, but I can read it in the next agenda as a change.
You want to put it off till the next meeting?
I can, or I can pull it-
Okay. Well, because we're approving it. Then what? We're going to unapprove it?
No, it's a, no, it's a PWS item.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. We'll do it that way. We'll do it your way. Just make a note to self.
Yes.
And that's a yes for me on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I have to find the second public portion reading. Give me a second. Okay, here we go. "This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents is to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business." Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share? Okay, here we go.
Good evening, Torrey Esposito, 47 Woodlot Road in Wayne. Dr. Toback, I'm still waiting for the letter from the Wayne School District to Governor Murphy to unmask the kids for the fall, like the majority of the other school districts in this state are doing to prepare for the fall. Can you please stand with the children? I mean, COVID apparently doesn't exist this week because it's hot. Not going to exist in September either. Unmask the kids. Three minutes, three seconds, three words. Unmask the kids. Thank you.
Next. Unmute? How do you unmute, Dr. Burchard?
I believe it's- I believe it's star six.
Hello?
There you are.
Hi. Okay, thank you for taking my call. My name is Sandy Persakos, and I'm calling from 28 Dartmouth Road. I don't even kind of know where to begin, a little bit frazzled here. But you had just gone over, I guess, the whole issue with the time limit. And I have to say that I- And I have to say that I, I tried multiple times to get in touch with Dr. Toback and Ms. Reichman as well. They did not return my calls or my emails. And I had reached out to the board office, and they told me the quickest way to get through would be to email them. And, and this was an email sent out from May 27th. Now, I had a lot of questions, and I could have had those questions answered so that way I wouldn't be wasting my time because a lot of what those questions were about was in reference to the presentation earlier. So I mean, if, if, if you can please make an effort to just let me know that you've read my email and you're going to get back to me, I, I would appreciate that. Because then again, it would save a lot of time. And here I am, probably just wasted half of my time explaining this to you before I get cut off. So I, I, I was going to read my letter, but I don't have time. So instead, I'm going to get to the point after that presentation, but also in my letter. My, my main issue was that a lot of terminology was thrown out there this evening that I, I did not understand. I don't believe that the residents of the town would understand it. And I, I'm demanding that before this extreme agenda goes forward, that, that you do explain what all these terms mean and, and terms. And I asked in my letter, what exactly is equity? What is equitable? How is that going to be implemented? What does that look like in the Wayne School District? What, what does that mean for the students? Equity, because we keep hearing that word is all over the place. Tonight, I've heard equity, equitable, implicit bias, intersectionality, systemic racism, on and on. The presentation went really fast. I couldn't jot everything down. And I, I just, it was kind of jaw-dropping. And what is, what is equity? We're going to look at everything through an equity lens. But what, what are you talking about equity? When I did my research on equity, I really found that it was highly connected to critical race theory, which is extremely controversial, you know, due to the fact that it has all these inaccuracies about our history. So I, I know there was a lot thrown out there, but it's very deceiving. And it's, it's just, it's something extremely controversial throughout the country right now. There's a lot of pushback that parents are giving to their own Board of Education. They're, they're going, they're sending letters, things like that. I, I'm just not happy with the direction that Wayne has, has turned into. I mean, your, your whole mission statement is focusing on equity. But when you look up what equity means, it's nothing like equality. Equity does not equal equality. It, it sounds like it, it's misleading, but it's not. It's not. And I, again, just please answer your emails. And I even called the office, and, and somebody told me they would get back to me. And I said, please, anybody, I don't care who responds. And, and Dr. Toback, I even said in my email, I don't know if you read it or not. I said, consult your, your colleagues, show it to the Board of Ed, whoever you need. No response, no response whatsoever. And, and again, this is frustrating. And I think that gets other people kind of hyped up and excited. Answer back because it's not transparent. And things are thrown at us, you know, at the last minute. And, and I understand you've got the issue with the masks. But, but there's just so much going on. Please let me know that you've, you've read it and you're considering it. And, and remember, you're talking about inclusion. I need to be included. Don't, don't exclude me, my thoughts. I had a lot of questions, a lot of questions that were, again, in regards, and, and I feel like I'm not prepared because you didn't give me the chance, you know, to have those questions answered. So now, again, I kind of wasted my time, you know, with that instead of going forward, taking your responses that I would have liked to have, you know, and, and going further from there. So please take this into consideration because it's frustrating. I, I have four children in the school system, and I'm not happy. I'm ready to pull them out, pull them out. Because this is a divisive agenda that's going forward. It, I don't believe that it is the consensus. It is in the consciousness, okay, as stated in, in one of the, you know, the, the mission statements that you guys put out there. But, but it is not something that it's all agreed upon. Please, please take this into consideration, what I'm saying. And be honest and be transparent and answer, answer the, the, the letters and, and, you know, the calls from the parents. And, and maybe we wouldn't have a lot of these issues that's going on. But again, just what is equity? What does equitable mean? What is all that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. First of all, I don't understand why I was not allowed to speak on this agenda item, Public Participation in Board Meetings, Policy Number 0167. The board had a discussion on it, and even voted on it. I don't understand why I wasn't allowed to speak on it if it was, if it was an agenda item. In any event, I'm speaking now during the general portion. I'm glad that you eliminated the 45-minute limitation on public comments. I agree with that. I also agree with Eileen Albanese that you should not reduce the time that each person can speak from five minutes to three minutes. I don't think three minutes is enough in every situation. Not everyone will use the five minutes. Some people will, most people won't. But the people who do probably have a good reason for talking for five minutes. I don't understand, number three. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. How do you know who's waiting around to speak on a particular topic until you call on them? I don't understand that at all. I think that this policy puts too much power in the hands of the presiding officer, who can quote waive these privacy or the efficient administration of the board's business. First of all, a, a vote should be taken by the board. But my other objection is that this is too vague. What do you mean by protection of privacy? Who's privacy? And why should the public be limited in their comments if someone has a private, some type of privacy concern that is not defined in this policy? It's too vague. Also, the presiding officer shouldn't be able to just put an end to the public portion, as D allows, without a full vote of the board. The board should be voting on this, not, not, the power should not be in the hands of the presiding officer. Uh, my second comment is with respect to the report on diversity, equity, and inclusion. As I understand the report, there is no recommendation that the Wayne Valley Indians nickname and mascot should be eliminated. And I completely disagree with that recommendation. Clearly, the Indians nickname for Wayne Valley High School should be abandoned and, and done, and it should be abandoned by a vote of this board. I don't see how it's tenable to keep the Indians nickname for Wayne Valley High School. It's been more than a half-century since the American Indians started their campaign to eliminate nicknames of schools and sports teams, such as Indians, Redskins, Braves, and Chiefs. They object to it, and we should comply with their wishes. And I don't understand how a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, which by the way is secret, we don't even know the identities of these people who made this recommendation. I object to that. Clearly, should the public should be able to know who is making these recommendations. Otherwise, how can the public judge the credibility of the recommendations? But clearly, a committee of, of diversity, equity, and inclusion should have come to the conclusion that the Indians nickname for Wayne Valley High School has to go. It doesn't pass the cringe test. And that's all I have to say. And I think I came in under five minutes. You should keep the five-minute rule. I agree with Eileen Albanese. Thank you.
That's your time. Thank you. Next?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, this is Evie Wenting, 7 Seminole. I have one question, but it is for each and every one of you. I would like you to answer whether or not you believe in the critical race theory. And this question also goes to Dr. Toback. I would like you to answer that for us. Thank you.
Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano? Mr. Duffy? I'm sorry, it was Mr. Giordano and Mr. Duffy. Sorry, Mike. Okay. Did you have any comment, Mr. Dr. Toback? I'm sorry.
Should I get talked to very quickly for Sandy Prasakos? Just a quick comment that we do receive an awful lot of emails in the board office. And so if you didn't respond, we apologize for that. But we'll certainly find your email, and then we'll respond to you tomorrow.
Okay, board members? Mrs. Shear?
I just wanted to bring up, just to clarify for Mr. Frieswick, that it was not the committee that decided on the mascot staying necessarily. I'm not sure if you're aware that there was a thought exchange done that included all Wayne Valley students. I believe that the eighth graders from the middle schools that will be going there, parents of Wayne Valley, and alumni. So I just wanted to clarify that fact that it was not just the committee that made that decision. It was actually probably half the town of Wayne. Thank you.
Old business? Is that a hand raise, Mr. Giordano?
I was waiting for new business.
Okay, new business. Right ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, let me take these off because I always get a feedback on this. So I apologize. During meetings, I very rarely comment. I very rarely comment about my personal opinions in public because as a board trustee, my personal opinion does not matter. My personal feelings, my personal teachings don't matter. As a trustee of the Board of Education, my personal feeling of the job is to represent the best interests of the students, the citizens, and all the stakeholders of the township of Wayne, especially in the Education Department. We've been listening for about a year to people demanding social justice, and I don't disagree with them, with equality. And I don't disagree with them. I think many of our ideas are too centered around a single group, and we should expand on those groups. And I don't have a problem with that. But anytime a situation like this comes up, it's like a pendulum. And the pendulum swings from, quite frankly, conservative to liberal, conservative to liberal. Right now, the pendulum is swinging in the township of Wayne towards the liberal end. And there's many fine qualities and many fine things that come from liberal, liberal ideology. There's also many fine things that happen in conservative ideology also. And both sides need to be heard equally in this case. And I salute, in this case, Sandy Prasakos for reaching out and speaking so passionately. I've watched politics for my great part of my life, and I have found that everything works best when it kind of comes down the middle, when a little bit from both sides get it. And I ask the people of the board to watch for that. When it goes far to one side or far to the other, it doesn't serve the, the entire community very well. And I encourage everybody to keep coming. Come to the next meetings when we go live and express those feelings. I will not answer the critical race theory. I think everybody out there has to learn that themselves. I have my opinion, but giving our opinion doesn't serve the community well. We weigh our evidences, we look at both sides of it, and ultimately ask one single question. What is best for our students? And if we're not doing what is best for our students, then we have to make changes for those students. We're all educated, and we're all people who are of excellent character and excellent judgments. There's some people on one side of this, some people on the other sides of this. However, we all come together as a single unit, and we then cast our votes as what we think is best for all students. So please, come forth and talk about racial equality. Come forth and talk about the honor and the dignity of Wayne and Wayne's history. Come talk about what you think is great about the critical race theory. But come back just as hard telling me how you disagree with the critical race theory. This is what America is all about here. And I just caution us from being too reactionary and swinging that pendulum from one side to the other. One last thing, as a personal note, and I apologize for my indulgence on the board. Today is June 10th of 2021. My parents will not see this until the recording afterwards, but I do want to wish them a very happy 59th anniversary. God bless you both. I love you both very much. And yes, Mom, you can be embarrassed now because your little boy got your name out on, out on what you call the TV. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I have some final comments to make, and I'd like to answer a question. Mr. Frieswick, we did not vote on that policy. We amended it, and it's up for a final vote at the next meeting. So there's still an opportunity for this entire board to vote no. We've heard your comments, and that's what this meeting is for. You have weighed in at the proper time. Obviously, the consensus was to go to the three minutes. Ms. Prasakos, Ms. Dr. Toback answered you. I also will not answer a question on critical race theory. As I mentioned after the goal was reported on, this is going to unfold gradually. All changes to our curriculum, to anything of that nature, will go through the regular process of committee work, discussion among the board, and voted on when necessary. So this is not ripping off a Band-Aid and making some epic monumental change to our district. Not, not at all. What we did was the work, the work to look at how we address different races, religions, et cetera, in our curriculum and our hiring practices, and make some recommendations to do better. I don't see that as a negative. I see that as a positive. I don't think it's anything radical, liberal, or conservative. I think it's just a good practice in any type of institution, public or private, to look at how they go about things. And I, for one, am not reacting or think that we are reacting to any sort of public outcry. This was a goal we set because we thought it was a timely goal, and everyone agreed to it. So we'll see how this unfolds, and you're certainly allowed to state your opinion about any of it at any time. The last couple of weeks have been amazing. The events I've attended, I will speak to a few. The Memorial Day Parade, the most well-attended parade I've seen in years. I don't know if it was the weather. Nobody went to the shore or chose not to have a barbecue. But I have to say, the turnout was unbelievable. And it's always a highlight for me to see both our bands marching down the street, showing off their talents, and the two young ladies who got up and sang the National Anthem and the "God Bless America" literally gave people chills. They did renditions that were, you would have had to have been there to understand how unbelievably fantastic they were. I attended two scholarship nights, one at Wayne Valley and one at Wayne Hills. Our community goes above and beyond. Their generosity is unparalleled. $120,000 in scholarships at both schools. I have to commend our PTO co-presidents and all of the executive boards throughout the district. They gave out over $40,000 at each school. How they managed to raise all... How they managed to raise all this money during a pandemic is just unbelievable and noteworthy. And thank you to everyone who came to the events and donated to our students who deserve it and worked very hard this year and still manage to succeed academically. I have two friends that gave out scholarships. One couldn't get over how well-run the events were. And the other one, both of them former teachers in our district, by the way, and I know them through another organization we belong to, couldn't get over how spotlessly clean the schools were. She had to make special note of it to me, and I was happy to hear it. She's like, oh, when I was here, the schools were never this clean. I can't believe how clean they are. So it was nice to hear from someone who hadn't walked our halls in a while to notice just how good a job our custodial staff is doing and how nicely we're maintaining our buildings, especially now during the pandemic. The honors night was held out on the field under the lights. It was beautiful. It was amazing. And I enjoyed that very much, and I think the parents did as well. I think that's it. The Uotto Show, Dr. Toback touched on, another great event. This is my favorite time of year, when we finally, and thank God, we're to a point where we can see the students in person. It warms my heart, because if any of us appear on this screen had anything to do with their academic success, we're just all terribly proud of them. I know I can speak for everyone on that. And we're looking forward to normal graduations again and moving on and putting this all behind us. So thank you to everyone, and I'll get a mover to close. Mr. Giordano, Mr. Pavlak, have a good evening.